Dee, will you please call the rule?
Mr. Betts.
Yep.
Mr. Carrier.
Here.
Ms. Cole.
Here.
Ms. Hale.
Yeah.
Vice President Teeter.
Ms. Vermillion.
Here.
President Cottone.
Here.
Council has copies of the September 22nd, 2025 regular and special executive session meeting minutes and the October 6th, 2025 special executive session meeting minutes. Are there any changes or corrections? Okay, hearing none, these minutes stand approved. We will go into commission and board reports. Board of Zoning Appeals, Greg Betts.
Yes, the next meeting is this Thursday, October 16th at 6:00 PM in these chambers.
Thank you. Destination Hilliard, Cynthia Vermillion.
We have the Halloween Haunt coming up on October 25th, Saturday, from 9:00 to 11:00 AM in Old Hilliard.
Thank you. Environmental Sustainability Commission, Cynthia Vermillion.
This Friday, the 17th, we have the collection of paper shredding and electronics here at the operations area.
Thank you. Keep Hilliard Beautiful, Greg Betts.
Yes, our next litter cleanup event is scheduled for this coming Saturday, October 18th, from 9:00 to 11:00. We will meet at the Nor Islamic Cultural Center at 5001 Wilcox Road, and we'll be focusing our efforts on the areas along Wilcox Road and Riggins Road. And as a reminder, we can't do it without volunteers, so all volunteers are very much welcome and appreciated. And the next Keep Hilliard Beautiful committee meeting is October 22nd at 6:00 PM in the council conference room.
Thank you. Morpsey, Mr. Rowley.
Two different items for update. At your places, you got copies of a Morpsey return on investment report. I think we, many of us, I think, intrinsically understand the value of regional collaboration. But Morpsey puts out this report as an attempt to quantify the value to Hilliard and other partner members around the region. Essentially, if you look at the details of that and align with how they have calculated that, we get $38 return on our investment for every dollar in membership fees. The second document that's at your places is an annual report from Franklin County Public Health, looking at restaurant inspections, other things that they perform on behalf of the city of Hilliard under the contract that we've got with them that was part of our operating budget here earlier this evening. So, that's it.
Thank you. Planning and Zoning Commission, Emily Cole.
Yes, there was a robust meeting on Thursday night held in these chambers, and I wanted to raise one of the topics that was the feature for the majority of the meeting, which was regarding Amazon, AWS's proposed site plan change. They're looking to incorporate fuel cell technology rather than a building on Area G on the site plan. Based on how that application went through, it will not come before city council. It is only for review by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and as you'll all recall, they have an incredibly more narrow scope of review for what they can consider when they make their determinations. But I wanted to note that this technology would be the largest facility in North America, the second-largest facility in the world. And there was not a lot of information provided during the Planning and Zoning Commission about how this technology could potentially impact residents, nearby neighbors, and the environment. It does not include any carbon capture technology. So I just wanted to share that with you all. And candidly, I was concerned that something like this will not come before council, and we do not have the opportunity to have input, but it rests with planning and zoning based on how the, it is a change to their site plan, so I wanted to share.
Thank you. Public Arts Commission, Tina Cottone, that's me. Unfortunately, I missed the meeting, but the group did meet at The Well and walked and toured around outside to look for possible places for some public art. I'm sorry I missed that. Up next, Recreation and Parks Advisory Commission, Peggy Hale.
Patients for memberships, and we are also hiring, so if you know anyone that's interested in a full-time, part-time job, have them apply.
Thank you. And lastly, Aging in Place Committee, that's me again. We will be tomorrow at the Senior Health Fair in The Well, and we had a meeting scheduled for tomorrow afternoon, which we canceled because we will already have all been together. So, recognition changes. You're going to consent agenda. There is one item on the consent agenda, 25R-78, accepting sanitary sewer public improvements from Upper Scioto West Phase 2 sub trunk. Would anyone like to move this item to the regular agenda for discussion? Okay, then I will entertain a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. All right, now we'll move on to public comments. This is the public portion of the meeting, and we have, we have three people signed up tonight to speak. First is Paul Lambert. Paul, please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Paul Lambert. I reside at 49, I'm sorry, 4697 Prestige Lane in Hilliard. Thank you for the opportunity to make comments on case PZ 25-59, which is a fuel cell project Amazon proposes for their Scioto-Darby campus. This is not going to be an envy complaint. As a member of the Hilliard School Board, I voted in favor of the resolutions that we passed to grant abatements to Amazon Web Services in order to attract them to our community. It's also worth mentioning that most of the asset value of these data center campuses resides in the vast number of servers, networks, switches, and other production equipment within their buildings. These assets have not been subject to personal property tax since 2005, but only the land in the building shall are taxable, and it's only the value of the land in the buildings which has been abated. Meanwhile, AWS is paying via side agreements, something on the order of buck and a half per square foot per year to Hilliard schools in lieu of taxes, and that generates, that when all the buildings are built out, that'll generate about $6 million a year, so they're not getting off scot-free. Nor am I a stranger to the business of operating data centers. My last assignment before retirement was as the vice president and general manager of the web hosting business of MCI WorldCom, where I had responsibility of building and operating large-scale data centers around the world, albeit nowhere near the scale of today's operators like Amazon, Google, Meta, and so on. But the issues are the same today as they were then, access to plentiful and cheap land, the availability of abundant and reliable electrical power, and perhaps equally important, friendly, and preferably naive local governments. Amazon's one of the most sophisticated players in the data center realm. They've been doing it for quite a while, but even while they are playing catch-up with the adoption of artificial intelligence throughout our economy. I'm going to skip a bunch of this just because of time. The punchline here is that Amazon proposes to remove a building from their plan and replace it with a large-scale of natural gas-powered fuel cell generating facility. They're doing that because artificial intelligence servers require a lot more power than the kind of servers that, for example, the Britton Road campus was built to operate. They need a lot more power. AEP can't deliver that power in time, so they and the other big players are putting their own onsite substantial generating facilities in. Meta's going to build a 400-megawatt gas turbine-powered generating facility at their campus in New Albany. Microsoft, who owns a pretty good-sized piece of land out there, has stated that they want to try to use small modular nuclear reactors on their sites. Good luck getting that passed around here. AWS wants to use natural fuel, natural gas-fueled fuel cells. Many of us have heard of fuel cells when they were used on spacecraft many years ago. Those fuel cells used hydrogen as their fuel, and they gave off only water and electricity. These fuel cells will give off over a million pounds of carbon dioxide per year. I'll just jump to the punchline and say that I believe, what I'm asking you to do here is to say that I believe our regulations, ordinances, codes, and so on inside the city are really not up to speed with-
Paul, you need to, you need to cut it.
I'm doing it right now. So it's, I'm asking you to, because our ordinances and so on aren't caught up to what Amazon wants to do, that you press pause on this project so that you have a time to, to look and see what this might do to our community.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Imam Dubal. Please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
My name is Abdul Munaim Dubal. I live in 5127 Vinings Boulevard, Dublin, Ohio. Salaam alaikum, peace be upon all of you. I'm Imam Abdul Munaim Dubal of Nor Islamic Cultural Center in Hilliard. I'm here tonight to address a painful misunderstanding that has caused hurt in our community. A prayer I made during a sermon was mistranslated and misinterpreted, leading some to believe untrue things about me and our faith. Let me be absolutely clear here. I would never encourage hate or violence towards Jewish people or any other faith. Islam forbids such hatred. Ours is a religion of peace and compassion. My prayer was meant to console a grieving congregation witnessing immense suffering and, of the murder, and the murder of over 20,000 Palestinian children. It was directed only to those committing such crimes. The latter part of my prayer was calling for punishment of the same criminal murderers and those who rejoice when they murder children and the innocent people, and not entire people, not entire religion, and also not entire country. Islam teaches us kindness and respect for all people. Our people, our prophet, Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, peace be upon him, showed compassion and, towards Jewish neighbors, stood in respect at a Jewish funeral, defending a wronged Jewish man, and upheld freedom at his, of faith, freedom of faith in his constitution of Al Madinah, of his city. Centuries before such rights were recognized elsewhere, I pray for peace, justice, and love among all the residents of Hilliard, Muslims, Jewish, and Christian, and any other faith. May God bless all of you. Thank you so much. Salaam alaikum, peace be upon you.
Thank you. Okay, we, we have one other person signed up to speak, Norgol Dada. Please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Yeah, my name is Norgol Dada, address 5182 Dry Creek Drive, Dublin, Ohio, 43016. Bismillah, Rahman, and Rahim, in the name of God, the most compassionate, the most merciful. First of all, thank you all for giving me an opportunity to speak to you, and I am the chairman of the Nor Islamic Cultural Center. We recognize that you have received numerous emails regarding our imams, one of our imams' sermons. So tonight, I speak to you not only as a representative of NICC, but also as a member of the broader Hilliard community, a community that has been hurt by an unfortunate controversy, one that the Imam has already spoken about, that has caused some pain and confusion for many. Let me be absolutely clear, NICC has never and will never allow its pulpit to be used to promote hatred or hostility towards people of any faith tradition. Since our founding over 20 years ago, NICC has served as a cornerstone of interfaith engagement and community building in central Ohio. We have consistently opened our doors to people of all backgrounds, Muslims, Christians, Jews, all faith traditions. It is an institution that is basically building unity, promoting justice, and mutual respect among all faiths. To be clear, the prayer that was misrepresented as hate speech was a sincere plea to God to end the suffering and injustice being witnessed in Gaza, a crisis that global institutions, including the United Nations and many human rights organizations, have recognized. This was not, and will never be, a condemnation of Judaism or Jewish people. NICC unequivocally rejects antisemitism, just as we reject Islamophobia and all forms of bigotry. The Holy Quran reminds us, "O you who believe, stand firmly for justice as witnesses to God, even if it be against yourselves or your parents and relatives." At NICC, we will continue to advocate for peace, for justice, and for the protection of every human being's dignity, regardless of religion, race, or nationality. We extend an open hand to all faith traditions. Let us engage in a sincere and constructive dialogue. Let us sit together, speak honestly, and work to rebuild understanding, not further division. May God's peace, mercy, and blessings be upon all of us. Thank you again.
Thank you. Okay, we have no one else signed up to speak. We will move on to the legislative portion of the meeting.
I didn't realize I needed to sign up. Am I able to take two minutes for the question?
Oh, okay.
He just needs to say, state his name and address.
We, state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes.
My address, it's important. My name is Chris Ignat. I know many of you already. My address is 3446 Darby Gun Boulevard. I back right up to Building A on the Amazon site. I'm probably one of the closest houses to the complex. I posted today on Facebook about the fuel cells, and Ms. Cole, I think you said, "We have no impact on this. We have no impact." And I just want to know from the rest of city council, if you all feel like you have absolutely no impact on these fuel cells going in? Because that's what you said. Did anybody else feel like they have no impact on the fuel cells? Okay. My question to you is, how are you going to allow P&amp;Z to decide on these fuel cells if there's no code in place? And I asked on the Facebook post, who writes the codes? Who writes the city ordinances? Who do they report to? Who do those folks report to? At the end of the day, for anybody to say you have no impact and you can't make a difference in what's going to happen is unbelievable to me, right? You are all here to take care of the community, and I heard sustainability earlier, I heard green earlier. This project is complete opposite of that. Does anybody know how much CO2 it's going to produce? Has anybody asked? Has anybody tested or got test results from any other location that's using one of these? You guys don't have the information, and neither does the P&amp;Z, right? The zoning. They don't have it, there's no code, they have nothing to even base their decision on. So I, like Mr. Lambert, totally agree that not only you guys, but anybody that's looking at this review at the next meeting, take a step back until you guys are all well-educated on what this is going to do, and not just in my backyard. Not my backyard, it's going to affect everybody in Hilliard. It's going to affect everybody's property values, right? And health in general. So I urge you guys to take some time and not rush through this. Get the answers, ask the hard questions, and, you know, I read last time the EPA permit. Says an EPA permit includes specific operational environmental limits, requirements for monitoring, reporting, and record-keeping, includes provisions for safety and emergency plans. Has anybody here reviewed that? Anybody seen it? Nope. So I don't know how anybody can say, "Hey, you guys, you guys make this decision. I don't want any part of it." So again, please, for your community, take your time. There's no rush.
Okay, thank you. This is, this is not an applause event. Okay, one, we'll allow one more person. Please state your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Khalid Turani, and 114607 of a point here in Hilliard. In the shadow of one of the worst genocide in the modern era, a genocide that produced a number of child abitae larger than the combined number in all conflicts since World War II, a genocide that murdered more journalists than all conflicts since World War II combined. In the middle of these atrocities, that was recognized by hundreds of academicians who specialize in the study of genocide and many international human rights organizations, some of which are Israelis like Beis Salam, in the middle of all these atrocities comes an extremist pro-genocide organization called Jewish Columbus, not, not to express dismay with the murder of over 20,000 Palestinian children, instead, they are outraged by a passionate cry-out to the almighty God to punish those who are committing the genocide and those enabling them. Jewish Columbus maliciously misrepresented the prayer of Imam Dubal, and to do that, they went to an organization that was started and headed by an admitted 30-year agent of the Israeli intelligence, Yigal Karmon. Was Jewish Columbus ignorant, oblivious, or were they just trying to divert attention from the ongoing genocide? Their actions revealed not a concern for truth or justice, but a desperate attempt to silence moral outrage and shield an unfolding atrocity from accountability. They went further, and they wanted to drag Hilliard into it by sending 17,000 emails, not only to Hilliard, but to everybody and their stepmother. And we know that the email, we got the, the document that the email was drafted, at least that's what it is alleged to be, by, by a PR firm out of Washington DC that is run by a former official of APAC, the official lobbying group on behalf of a foreign state, dragging Hilliard into that, trying to sow seeds of division is outrageous. It is something that Hilliard, I believe, should stand against, and I believe all council members should stand against that kind of attempt to drag Hilliard into, into a division, into some kind of conflict between us and our Jewish friends and Jewish comrades and people of different faiths. My friend Rabbi Weiss told me Zionism does not equal Judaism, and anyone who attempts to convince you of that, they are either misrepresenting Judaism, or they're misrepresenting Zionism. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here.
Okay. Now, we're, we have no more speakers. We're moving on to the legislative portion of this meeting. We have two second ordinances. Dee, will you please read Ordinance 25-23 by title only?
2523 was postponed at the last meeting for the second reading and public hearing. Rezoning 1.284 acres of land located at the northeast corner of Roberts Road and Alton Darby Road from R1 Low Density Residential District to HCD Hilliard Conservation District.
Thank you. This is the second reading public hearing on this ordinance. Has anyone signed up to speak?
I have no one signed up, ma'am.
Thank you. Does council have any questions?
John, you know he's here.
What's that?
He's here.
Whoever wants to speak first.
We just need your name and address, sir.
Yeah, my name is Ben Simbida. Address is 4100 Regent Street, Suite M, Columbus, Ohio, 43219. I'm just here on behalf of Circle K, who couldn't make it last minute. Nothing to really add. Just here to answer any technical questions you may have. I'm the civil engineering consultant for Circle K.
Okay. Okay, John, do you want to give your staff report, and then we can open it up for questions?
Sure. The proposal is to rezone a little over an acre and a quarter of land on the northeast corner of Roberts and Alton Darby Roads, and the proposal is to rezone it to Hilliard Conservation District. There's a exhibit. If you need to see that, it's just a legal exhibit. Four parcels, there they are. You can see that the, the ultimate right-of-way is shown on there for, when the roundabout gets constructed there in the future. The, the intention here, the staff has recommended to the applicant is to rezone this to the Hilliard Conservation District classification, and then in a future application, to include that in the Alton Place HCD plan. And the Alton Place HCD plan allows for a gas station convenience store on the southwest corner of this intersection, and staff is recommending that they do this action so that the gas station convenience store can be on the northeast corner, farther away from the Hamilton Run. So that would be a better plan. This is just the rezoning portion. The application will have to come through for a site plan. That'll have to go to the Darby Accord Panel, then it will go to the planning commission. And then it'll go to council to, to actually add this to the Alton Place Plan, if that's ultimately what they apply for. The Hilliard Community Plan recommends residential, medium-density residential in this area. The difficulty with that is that there's no connection on the surrounding properties to the east and north for connection that way. Those are multifamily uses. The Big Darby Accord, General Land Use Plan identifies this site as existing development, even though there was really no development there, also residential high-density. And it's also adjacent to an area that's identified as mixed-use, which this would, this would be consistent with that. It's also in an area that could be suitable for the areas between residential and corridors that are commercial, so it's kind of in, kind of in the middle of all those. This proposal will allow a zoning district that's consistent with the Big Darby Accord, General Land Use Plan. So planning commission recommended to forward a positive recommendation to council on this. Do you have questions about any of that?
Any questions? I hear no questions. Did you, okay, yeah, he was asking.
I'm sorry. Not a question, per se. I just kind of wanted to reiterate my comments I made last time, that, you know, recent studies have shown that there are a lot of toxic fumes that are emitted from gas stations. Gas leaks, even in tiny amounts, will affect the water, and leaks occur in many, many different points of transfer. You know, if I was spending a million dollars on a home in Alton Place, I don't think I would want to live near a gas station, but that's me. You know, I feel we have the Shell gas station just down the road off of Scioto-Darby, so it's, it's not like we're hurting for fuel stations. So I just wanted to put that out there for my colleagues. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, any comments?
John, I think the same question I asked last time. This has already been approved for the southwest corner, correct?
Correct. It's allowed in the Alton Place Plan, yes.
So they could build it on the southwest corner if we turn this down tonight?
Correct.
Any other comments?
Yes. What was the reason again why they, they want to move it from the southwest corner to the northeast corner?
I don't know if they do, but that's, we've been encouraging them, knowing that they want to build one, and this site was the site that they picked, so this is the one that we are responding to. to.
And you, what, you said you recommended that they move it from the southwest corner?
No, I recommended they include this site into the Alton Place HCD, because the Alton Place HCD allows one automobile service station, or convenience store, or gas station, and if it gets approved on this site, you can't put it on the southwest side.
Okay, any other questions? All right, Dee, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier? Ms. Hale? Mr. Betts?
No.
President Cottone?
Yes.
Ms. Vermillion?
No.
Vice President Teeter?
Yes.
Pass five-two.
Ordinance 25-23 has passed and will be in effect at the earliest date allowable by law. Dee, will you please read ordinance 25-25 by title only?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for the city's purchase of stop-loss insurance.
Thank you. This is the second reading public hearing on this ordinance. Has anyone signed up to speak?
No, ma'am.
Or is there? Okay. Anyone in attendance who wants to speak, who did not sign in? Does council have any questions? That's okay. Thanks. Dee, will you please call the roll?
Vice President Teeter?
Yes.
Mr. Betts?
Yes.
Ms. Vermillion?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
President Cottone?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Pass seven-zero.
Thank you. Ordinance 25-25 has passed and will be in effect at the earliest date allowable by law. We'll move on to first readings. Dee, will you please read ordinance 25-26 by title only?
Appropriating funds for the operating expenses of the City of Hilliard, Ohio for the period ending December 31st, 2026.
Would a council member like to sponsor and adopt?
So moved.
Thank you. Ms. Colley?
Good evening, members of council. As we discussed in the committee, the whole, we went through the operating budget in full detail, you have the details available to you. We do have a couple of follow-up questions that I will email to all of you directly within the next 24 hours or so, and we'll be happy to answer any further questions if you have any. Otherwise, this is a balanced budget, and we are very much trying to minimize expenses as best as possible.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions that you didn't get to ask an hour ago? Okay, thank you. Second reading public hearing on ordinance 25-26 will be October 27th, 2025. Dee, will you please read ordinance 25-27 by title only?
Amending certain sections of Part 5, the General Offenses Code, are the city's codified ordinances to align with the Ohio Revised Code and to provide for codification of the amendments.
Thank you. Would a council member like to sponsor and second?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. This is an annual piece of legislation where we amend our code to align with Ohio Revised Code changes. There was a table attached to the memo that gave you an outline of what sections were being changed and what was changing. Most of them are minor, not too many substantive changes. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay, thank you. Second reading public hearing on ordinance 25-27 will be October 27th, 2025. Dee, will you please read ordinance 25-28 by title only?
Amending certain sections of Part 3, the Traffic Code, are the city's codified ordinances to align with the Ohio Revised Code and to provide for codification of the amendments.
Thank you. Would a council member like to sponsor and second?
So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you, city council members. Similar to just the previous ordinance, this is the annual ordinance where we update the traffic code to align with Ohio Revised Code changes. Again, a table was provided showing the traffic code changes being made. I'm happy to answer any questions regarding those.
Any questions? Okay, thank you, Ms. Clodfelder. Ordinance 25-28, the second reading public hearing on ordinance 25-28 will be October 27th, 2025. We'll move on to resolutions. Dee, will you please read Resolution 25R79 by title only?
Setting a public hearing for the 2026 operating budget.
Would a council member like to sponsor and adopt?
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Ms. Colley.
Good evening, council. This is just our annual resolution to notify of the public hearing for the operating budget.
Okay. Are there any questions, comments? All right, thank you. Dee, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Vermillion?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier? President Cottone?
Yes.
Mr. Betts?
Yes.
Ms. Hale? Vice President Teeter? Pass seven-zero.
Thank you. Resolution 25R79 has passed and is in effect at the earliest date allowable by law. Will you please read 25R80 by title only?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a construction contract with Strausser Paving Company for the Wilcox Road-Silverton Way improvements, CIP T-133 slash CIP T-121, and authorizing the expenditure of funds.
Thank you. Would a council member like to sponsor and adopt?
So moved.
Okay.
Good evening, members of city council. This piece of legislation is for a construction contract to do some work on Wilcox Road from our northern corporation limit down to Riggins Road. The project includes street resurfacing, trail rehabilitation, and a crosswalk improvement at the intersection of Silverton Way. This project was put out for bid in early September. We had three bidders. The low bidder was Strausser Paving Company. We are requesting authorization for this contract in an amount not to exceed $234,000, which includes a 10% contingency to, for approved change orders on the project. This project should be completed by the end of May in the spring. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions? All right, thank you. Letty, Dee, will you please call the roll?
Can I ask a question as to who seconded? Is Greg? I know, that's what I heard.
I want a second, I want a second.
Ms. Vermillion?
Yes.
Mr. Betts?
Yes.
President Cottone?
Yes.
Vice President Teeter? Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Hale? Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Pass seven-zero.
Thank you. Resolution 25R80 has passed and is in effect at the earliest date allowable by law. Dee, will you please read 25R81 by title only?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a construction contract with J&amp;J Schlegel Inc. for construction of the Darby High School Retention Basin Rehabilitation Project, CIP ST27, and authorizing the expenditure of funds.
Thank you. Would a council member like to sponsor and adopt?
So moved.
Thank you.
Good evening. Another construction contract. Again, this is for the rehabilitation of the basin that sits on Merchant Park behind Darby High School. This project consists of bank stabilization as well as some tree clearing, because access for this project includes removing a little bit of the fencing that goes behind Darby High School. We coordinated with the school district on this project. This is actually a 2026 project, but we knew we wanted to bid it out this fall so that tree clearing could begin as early as November 1st, and was required to be completed by the end of February. And then the balance of the project would be completed when school is out, beginning June 1st, and must be completed by August 15th. Again, we bid this project out. There were three bidders, and the low bidder that we're recommending a war to is J&amp;J Schlegel Inc. The unique thing about this project is that it's funded over two capital budgets. There's about $183,000 remaining in the capital improvement budget for this project in 2025. The balance to fund this project will be included in the 2026 capital budget, which you will see in two weeks. Happy to answer any questions.
Cynthia?
Hi, Letty. I wanted to know if you could give us more information about the trees? Like, are they helping to destabilize the banks, and will any be replaced? How's that going to work?
So pretty much, not all of the trees entirely around the basement, basin, but where you're having a lot of erosion, all of those are going to be removed. We are going to be planting some additional trees as part of our annual tree planting program that the city does, so we not be built as part, be constructed or added as part of this project. But our normal purchasing of trees that we plant around town, both in the right-of-way and on public parks, will be added back to establish some tree cover in this park area.
Is extra vegetation going to be planted on the banks, or how's that going to look?
No, actually, it is, oh, shoot, I should have done my homework better. It is a bank stabilization process that consists of almost like a riprap around the edges, so stone that gets stabilized into the bank, because the portion of the bank that sits behind the Westwood Collective Building is the normal way the winds blow, and so you get a lot of lapping of the water, and that's where we're having a lot of erosion, where there's a trail right along there. So those are the sections that are going to be stabilized. There are some sections of that pond that are not experiencing any erosion, and those will be left alone, and the trees will stay in place in those locations. Thank you.
Yes. Letty, is this where they're going to pull the dirt out of the bottom and put them in those big, long tubes and let it dry and redo it? Or is this, are they digging that deeper, or what are they doing with that?
No, on this project, it wasn't necessary. So before we do these projects, we go in and we survey the basin, the bottom of the basin, to determine if there's a lot of extra sediment in it.
Right.
In this particular one, there was not, so there is no sediment removal, whereas our 2025 basins, all three of those did have to be dredged.
Dredged, okay. And are you putting new fish in there when you're done?
We are not doing any new fishing, no.
I would move that we add some bass, at least two feet long in there, so when it's done, we can go fishing after we eat pizza. What do you think?
That is not an engineering matter.
Not a matter for you. Thank you very much, Letty.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Dee, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Vermillion?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
President Cottone?
Yes.
Mr. Betts?
Yes.
Vice President Teeter? Mr. Carrier? Ms. Hale? Pass seven-zero.
Thank you. Resolution 25R81 has passed and is in effect at the earliest date allowable by law. Dee, will you please read 25R82 by title only?
Authorizing the city manager to accept the conveyance of a warranty deed for .148 acres of land from 5471 Scioto Darby Investors LLC for the purpose of public right-of-way.
Thank you. Would a council member like to sponsor and adopt?
So moved.
I seconded it.
So this is a right-of-way cleanup ordinance, a resolution, excuse me. Came to our attention in late August as part of a routine property transfer. This is the property located immediately west of the Hilliard United Methodist Church on the south side of Scioto Darby Road, across from Donato's, where the traffic signal sits. So it's been developed for many, many years. There's been a sidewalk there for many years, and for some reason, there was never a right-of-way dedicated on this parcel. So old county roads, typically the property owners own to the center of the street, usually that gets cleared up as part of some zoning action. For whatever reason, it did not happen on this property, and so it's brought to our attention. So that property owner that just recently purchased the property in September, September 15th of 2025, has requested that this right-of-way be dedicated so that it's cleaner transaction, cleaner title. So happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you. Dora, are there any questions? Okay, Dee, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Vermillion?
Yes.
President Cottone?
Yes.
Vice President Teeter? Ms. Hale? Mr. Carrier? Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Betts?
Yes.
Pass seven-zero.
Thank you. Resolution 25R82 has passed and is in effect at the earliest date allowable by law. Dee, please read 25R83 by title only?
Resolution to adopt a cybersecurity program and establish policies and procedures required on Ohio Revised Code subsection 9.64.
Thank you. Would a council member like to sponsor and adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Dwayne?
Good evening, members of council. The resolution before you will bring the City of Hilliard into compliance with the state of Ohio's new cybersecurity requirements enacted under House Bill 96 in June of this year. The Ohio General Assembly passed House Bill 96 in response to the growing number of ransomware attacks, data breaches, and cybersecurity threats facing local governments. The city's IT department has had these security measures aligned with NIST 853 in place for several years, and we have been audited by these standards by the Ohio Cyber Reserve. This resolution formalizes our compliance with state law. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? I have a question. Why are you always the last one to present?
I asked the same question of Kelly tonight, I did. Because, and mine was in two weeks ahead of time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a conspiracy theory again.
I know, he always is. Dee, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Betts?
Yes.
Ms. Vermillion?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier? Vice President Teeter? President Cottone?
Yes.
Ms. Hale? Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Pass seven-zero.
Thank you. Resolution 25R83 has passed and is in effect at the earliest date allowable by law. This concludes the legislative portion of the meeting. Moving on, I have no comment tonight. Mr. Rowley? All right. Dee, you're up.
We have several vacancies out online. We just closed up the ESC, and I sent those applicants' resumes to the ESC chair and Ms. Vermillion. The planning and zoning positions and the VZA positions closed this Friday, so I encourage anyone who's interested to please apply.
How many P and Z are there? Oh, are they?
It's a, it's a partial term that Mr. Marsh.
Oh, right. Okay, thank you.
Serving.
That's it? All right. Does council have any other items for discussion? Okay. Is there a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Meeting is adjourned.